Good evening, everyone. It's great to have everybody here tonight. It's October 27th, 2025, and this is the regular meeting of the CCI SD Board of Trustees. We're so happy to have each and every one of you here on this beautiful evening. And our pledges are going to be led by House Creek Elementary students and our invocation by Mr. Mike Wilburn. So if you'll all please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
If you may stand for the invocation, please.
Heavenly Father, we are be grateful that you allow us to live in a land where we can express our thoughts and actions freely. We thank you, Father, for many women who gave their lives that we may do that. Pray, Father, for those that are currently in service, and pray that you would protect them. Thank you for the students that we have, much like what we see tonight. Thank you for their dedication to learning. Pray, Father, that you would be with the staff and all those that are involved in education of these students. Pray, Father, that you guide our decision tonight, for it's in the name of Jesus we ask it. Amen.
Amen. Now we will be respectful, be responsible, be kind, be safe, and be our best. Go Dogs!
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Great job. They're all walking out the door now. I know. Our mission statement will be said by Mr. Tim Traeger.
Good evening. Our mission, the mission of Copper's Cove ISD is to provide exceptional opportunities for each student through exemplary instruction which inspires academic success, personal excellence, and responsible citizenship.
Thank you, Tim. Boy, he's got that announcer voice, doesn't he? Now, it's citizen comments, and we have a couple of people who have signed up tonight. Our first is James Ortiz, 507 Preakness Drive in Copper's Cove, and he would like to talk to us about the use of therapy animals in school. James?
Good evening. Thank you very much for your time. So I've come to persuade the School Board of CCI SD and its administration to implement a clear, thorough, and reasonable policy for all staff, including substitutes, to use trained and certified therapy dogs in our schools. Some people may not be aware, but unlike service dogs, therapy dogs are not trained to provide a specific task for individuals with disabilities. Instead, their role is to provide comfort and emotional support in various settings such as hospitals, schools, and disaster areas to all people. During the last five years of my career in CCI SD, I took my trained and certified therapy dog to Copper's Cove High School. Sam, Sam was a Pyrrhines. He came to school with me at the perfect time during COVID. We all know the psychological and emotional effects that COVID had on our students and staff, and Sam was there to provide comfort and distraction from this event. I won't stand here and rattle off all the research supporting the use of therapy dogs because I know my time is limited. However, I would like to share some testimonials from former students and staff with whom I worked. Excuse me. One student said to me, "I stopped skipping school on Fridays when I heard Sam would be here." He did improve his attendance that year. Another student says, "Sam being here before one of my classes and tests helped me with my severe social anxiety." One staff member replied, "When you brought Sam to my classroom, our moods changed for the better." And another staff member said, "It was wonderful to see our students' faces light up and be engaged and distracted in the hallway, having conversations with you about Sam. Thank you for bringing him." And one final comment I would like to share really hit home with me, because we all know some of the psychological problems that our students go through. This one is special to me. There are days when everything felt dark and I wanted to give up, but when you brought Sam, it was bearable. Thank you for bringing him, Mr. O. Sam's gentle and calm demeanor have brought much joy and comfort to students and staff. Sam became a part of the culture and life on campus, and not a day went by when I had at least one person ask me about Sam, or where he was when I left him at home. When Sam was at school, he provided affection, attention, and a sense of connection among all of us. When I taught at Copper's Cove High School and Sam was present, my students were more attentive, present, and classroom management was a little bit easier, especially with the challenging groups, strengthening the rapport and connection I already had with them and building where I did not. I cannot emphasize enough the impact Sam had on our lives at Copper's Cove High School. I implore the School Board and the District Administration to work on making a sensible policy for trained and certified therapy dogs to be used in our schools. If the District decides to move forward with this plan, with this former teacher's perspective and experience on using therapy dog in classroom, I am willing to offer my time to sit and work on planning and logistics with you. If you would like to discuss this further with me, Mr. John Gallin has my contact information. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz.
Thank you.
You may not know, but we can't ask questions or carry on a conversation with the people that come up for citizens' time, but I do like to let everyone know that we're not being rude or mean or anything. It's just a state law that we have to abide by. So we will go to the next person, and that's George McMaster, 1101 Magnolia in Copper's Cove, and he would like to talk about the 2025 bond and last year's bond attempt.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for allowing me to come before you and give my thoughts about what I'm here to pretend. As an expected father, I see the purpose and value of what this year's bond represents. You have no objections from me for what the bond stands for and what strides the District has made to sell it in an open and transparent manner. For that and much more that I don't have time for, I voted for all three propositions. Last year, unfortunately, is something I couldn't reasonably support even if I had seen the value of what was being sold at the time. I voted against last year's attempt because I did not trust what the District was selling and what the bond stood for at the time, and that was before a certain matter that should be investigated by the Texas Ethics Commission reared its ugly head. I will not mention it. I want you to know what I'm talking about on that one. That bond deserved to fail, as cruel and unfortunate as that sounds. It deserved to fail. This year, however, this year's bond deserves to pass solely on its merits. If it also helps, the way the District has been selling this bond and the stakeholders are selling this bond also presents a positive case to have all three propositions be passed this year. As for me, I don't believe in any of the misinformation going around about the bond, nor do I vote against things solely because I think my tax bill will be unjustly hiked. It will be justly hiked based on what I'm seeing. I believe the District, the bond stakeholders, and everybody involved in selling the bond are being open, honest, and trustworthy to me as a voter, and that's why I voted for it. Despite my misgivings about a political action committee being involved in the school district bond selling, that's a different story, but I still voted for it because of what I've been presented. If last year's bond attempt was handled in the same manner as this year's, we will be having a much different conversation. I will leave it at that, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMaster. All right, we will go on to good things, and we'll start with Mr. Quillen and board members, if you'll go down, please.
Madam President, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, as we start recognitions tonight, we want to start with the wonderful staff we have in the District, and we have two staff recognitions, but for our first one, as many of you are aware, October is National Principal Appreciation Month. I do believe all 11 are here tonight, and so we wanted to take a moment like we always do to celebrate them in this month, and to help us with that, Mayor Dan Yancey from the City of Copper's Cove is here with us to proclaim National Principal Appreciation Month here in Copper's Cove.
Good evening. I bring a proclamation from the City of Copper's Cove, whereas the month of October 2025 has been declared as National Principals Month in coordination with the efforts of the National Association of Elementary School Principals, the American Federation of School Administrators, and the National Association of Secondary School Principals, working with U.S. Congress to designate National School Principals Month and the resolutions thereof. And whereas principals are expected to be educational visionaries, instructional leaders, assessment experts, disciplinarians, which I have intimate knowledge of in my youth, community builders, public relations experts, budget analysts, facility managers, special programs administrators, and guardians of various legal, contractual, and policy mandates and initiatives, as well as being entrusted with the education and development of young people, the most valuable resource. And whereas principals set the academic tone for their schools and work collaboratively with teachers to develop and maintain high curriculum standards, develop mission statements, and set performance goals and objectives for schools to achieve educational excellence. And whereas to honor and recognize the contribution of all school principals and assistant principals at all grade levels to the success of students in Copper's Cove Elementary and Secondary Schools, and to encourage residents of Copper's Cove to observe National School Principals Month with appropriate ceremonies and activities that promote awareness of school leadership's role in ensuring that every child has access to high-quality education. Now therefore, I, Dan Yancey, Mayor of the City of Copper's Cove, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Principal Appreciation Month. In witness thereof, I have heretofore sent my hand and caused the seal of the City of Copper's Cove to be affixed this 27th day of October 2025.
Will each of our campus principals who is here tonight, please come up, get your copy of this year's proclamation, and then we'll take a photo.
Let me just go on record. They don't work at Harker Heights, okay? It actually is Red Ribbon Week, and so we'll be back in blue soon.
Mary Yancy, we appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
And while everyone gets resettled in, our next recognition here in this portion is from the Copper's Cove Education Foundation, which every year donates a lot of money for innovative teaching grants. This year's total is $40,614, which will be donated for 20 grants issued to 30 teachers and staff across eight campuses in the District, so I'd like to welcome the Board of Directors for the Copper's Cove Education Foundation. Okay, tonight, we're going to get on to student recognitions, and we have a lot of student recognitions in October. The first of which we're going to talk about are national recognitions from the College Board, which are part of the National Merit Scholarship Program. And so we have several, I think it was 21 students at Copper's Cove High School who received those, and so tonight, we're going to call them up, and we'll do one group photo at the end with all of them. Courtney Addy received the Rural and Small Town Recognition and the School Recognition from the College Board. Savannah Campbell earned the Rural and Small Town Recognition Award. Kylie Boldman earned the Rural and Small Town Recognition and the School Recognition. Ryan Cartwright Jr. earned the Rural and Small Town Recognition, the First General Recognition, and the School Recognition. Kaitlin Irvin earned the Rural and Small Town Recognition and the First General Recognition Awards. Zoe Eiler earned the Rural and Small Town Recognition and the School Recognition Awards. Gavin Fall earned the Rural and Small Town Recognition Award. Christina Falekia earned the Rural and Small Town Recognition Award. Conley Hammondtree earned the Rural and Small Town Recognition and the School Recognition Award. Savannah Lopez earned the Rural and Small Town Recognition, the First Generation Recognition, and the School Recognition Awards. Isabella Orta earned the Rural and Small Town Recognition and School Recognition Awards. Ruhi Patel earned the Rural and Small Town Recognition, the First Generation Recognition, and the School Recognition. Myla Ardeal earned the First Generation Recognition and the School Recognition Awards. Avery Robinson earned the First Generation Recognition Award. Jaden Thomas earned the Rural and Small Town Recognition Award. Leilani Thompson earned the School Recognition and First Generation Recognition Award. Lydia Wagner earned the Rural and Small Town Recognition Award. And Chloe Wilkins earned the First Generation Recognition Award. And that is it for the National Recognitions Program. All right, everyone, right here. Three, two, one. One more. Three, two, one. Moms? Moms, dads, parents, grandparents. Congratulations, John. We have more student recognitions that we'd like to celebrate tonight. The first of which, staying on the same track with the preliminary SAT, we'd like to celebrate Micah J. Smith for their outstanding performance on the PSAT and National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test in 2024. Micah was not able to be here with us tonight. Our last student recognition for the night, Penelope Dahmer, who placed first in the Supreme Lodge Knights of Pithias Poster Contest in the Copper's Cove Division, first in the Domain of Texas, and third at the Supreme Lodge level of competition.
You know what? I have to apologize to you, but I would like to say something about this young lady. She's an exceptional artist, all right? Not only she won first place here for the hand-drawn division for the junior high school kids in Hope here in Copper's Cove, but she did take first place in the state of Texas, and she did place as a winner on the international level. So we receive posters from Canada, here in the United States, England, Italy, and the Philippines. All right, so I am very pleased. There are two checks enclosed in this envelope, and this young lady gets the money.
All right, everyone, right here. Three, two, one. Congratulations. And that's it for good things tonight.
That's always an exciting time for everyone. Everybody can go except the principals, right? Well, maybe not everybody, but... The principals get to stay tonight. All right. On our consent agenda tonight, we have the Board of Trustees meeting minutes from our workshop meeting September 8th, 2025, and our regular meeting September 22nd, 2025. We have consideration to approve CCI SD's participation in purchasing cooperatives for 2025-2026, consideration to approve a resolution to participate in the One Government Procurement Alliance, consideration to approve the purchase of proposed library books K through 12. We have items exceeding $50,000. We have a purchase of 60 smart charging carts. This is from Prime Systems, Buy Board 760-25 for $100,128, and this is from IMA Funds. We have Region 12 ESC Shared Services Agreement and Membership Contract. It's invoice 115961-dash, oh, not dash, anything, for $56,681.49. This is from budgeted funds. We have an out-of-state trip. The Copper's Cove High School band staff is going to the Midwest Clinic International Orchestra Conference in Chicago, Illinois, December 17th through 20th in 2025, and this is not because we have an orchestra. Don't everybody get excited? You know, when we read this, we're like, orchestra? Are you kidding? Well, they have a lot of other conference pieces to that orchestra conference. We wish there was an orchestra, and someday we'll have one, right? We're planning on it. So that's that out-of-state trip. Now, just remember, we had a workshop a couple of weeks ago, or was it last week? Last week. Time's going really fast for me, or really slow, maybe. I don't know which, but anyway. My daughter's about to have a little girl, so that's why I'm like, ah. Anyway, we're excited about that. So, anyway, we always have a workshop, and ours was last Monday night, and that's when we discuss all these items. So you don't hear a lot of discussion at regular board meetings because we like to make them go quickly, but if anybody does have a question or would like something taken out of our consent agenda, you're welcome to. If not, I would be glad to take a motion on the consent agenda items.
So I'll move, Madam President.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Gallin, a second by Mrs. Copeland. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. All right, we'll start with Sherry.
Aye.
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 All right, it was unanimous, and the motion passed. So we are not going into closed session tonight, but we do have one last item, consideration to approve professional personnel.
Members of trustees, this time, we are very fortunate to be able to fill two of our positions. I'm recommending Sally Thirion and Rachel Olson on probationary contracts.
We will accept the recommendation.
We have a motion by Mr. Wilburn, a second by Mr. Traeger. Any questions or discussion?
Both are probationary contracts?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Okay, we will go starting with Mr. Gores, if you'll say aye or nay.
Aye.
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 Okay. All right, so that is unanimous, and the motion carries. And believe it or not, y'all, this may be a record. I'm adjourning this I'm adjourning this meeting at 6:29 PM, before our old meetings used to even start, right? Y'all have a great evening. Thank you.